I am dressed. Clinic ran late and I had no time to change. Madam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilman Embarrassan.
May those assembly here today enjoy the many offerings of our township. May we abide by the rules we have established, those of trust, fellowship, and ethics, and may we place service above self in our daily endeavors. And may we always test ourselves and our efforts to be sure they are the truth, good for all concerned, of benefit to mankind, and provides peace and understanding. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrassan.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Onijaka.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick.
Present.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasanella. Councilman Wright.
Councilwoman Udine was called away on death in the family. Commendations and proclamations, commendations for student authors which counsel person. I almost called you Deputy Mayor Embarrassan.
Former.
Former. Well, someday we'll all be deputy mayors. Wouldn't be a council meeting without an AV program.
That works. Good evening, Year One. All right. Today, we are going to recognize three high school students in Franklin. These are young, these are our young people. These are our future leaders. While at age, a lot of us were just playful and spending time with our friends, but these kids really sharpened their writing skills and they wrote short stories and competitively, competitively got selected by Ramapo College, a collection of story books that got published. And the book is available on Amazon. And it's my great pleasure and honor to recognize these kids and give them a commendation. The teacher, the English teacher who was the inspiration, Ms. Sarah, she was going to be here, then because of the weather, she couldn't make it. And there are three kids that we are going to recognize, and I see only one. The other two are not here, but I'm going to read their names as well. A commendation to Ilankadir Ilamaran, Kayla Washington, and Isabella Robles. Whereas Franklin Township Presidents Ilankadir Ilamaran, Kayla Washington, and Isabella Robles have had their work published in Ramapo College's book collection called The Helpers. And whereas these students shared stories about people who helped them succeed most in life. And whereas Ilankadir, Kayla, and Isabella are now published authors with a book available on Amazon. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey hereby commend and recognize Ilankadir Ilamaran, Kayla Washington, and Isabella Robles for their exemplary accomplishments and wish them well in their future endeavors. Ilankadir, would you like to come here? Yeah, keep it up. We'd like to see more work from you, all right? Ilankadir actually just published a second book, translated a work from my native language, Tamil. He and his father, they hail from Tamil Nadu, which is where we speak Tamil. And he took a book in Tamil and translated to English, and that got published as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this commendation. And I want to say thank you to my English teacher, Ms. Sarah Montanari. She gave me this opportunity to write this short story that got published in a book. She wasn't able to be here today, but I want to say thank you to her, and thank you so much for this commendation.
We now have a Black History Month Proclamation. Man Karazi will be reading.
Good evening. Actually, I had the opportunity last week to attend an event in the township in recognition of Black History Month, which was organized by the Black Caucus. It was a wonderful event and great performances and great speakers. And truly, it was very educational. And not only it was an opportunity to enjoy and have learned, but also it brought some of the history back from those that they have come here as slaves, those that they endured unimaginable hardship and injustice for almost 250 years. And also, the recognition of the leaders, both white and black, who put their lives on the line to fight for freedom and justice, not only for African Americans, but for anyone who were or are marginalized. And I encourage the community members to take advantage of these events that is taking place in New Jersey this month, to learn about the history. And the more we learn about each other's heritage and history, the more we appreciate each other and we become united and have mutual respect. Now, Councilwoman Kimberly Francois could not be here, so I have the honor of reading a proclamation on her behalf and on behalf of the council. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Black History Month is an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African Americans and the gift of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on future generation. And whereas it is also a time to commemorate the countless contribution of African Americans, many of whom lived through and surmounted the scourge of segregation, racial prejudice, and discrimination to enrich every fiber of American life. Their examples of heroism, patriotism, and enterprise have given people of all backgrounds confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams. And whereas the many local organizations and many individuals throughout our township are dedicated to the principle of fostering civic, economic, and educational programs throughout the township of Franklin and are dedicated to encouraging reflection on the rich history and teaching of African Americans and bearing witness to the progress, beauty, and achievement they have made throughout our community. And whereas Black History Month is a call to each and every citizen of our community to reflect on the cultural, scientific, political, and economic contributions of African Americans, which are woven through American society and we remember, learn from, and build on the past so that together we can build a better and more prosperous future for all Americans. Now, therefore, we, Philip Kramer, Mayor, and Kimberly Francois, Councilwoman of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, New Jersey, on behalf of the Franklin Township Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February to be Black History Month in the Township of Franklin and urge all citizens to join in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and tradition with those around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, time for a public discussion. Do we have a motion open to the public?
So moved.
Moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now open to the public. The weather out there, some of the streets are still not quite cleared. The weather is getting colder and streets are going to freeze, so I'm going to try to move this meeting along and. Public speaking time to three minutes. Anyone wishing to come up can speak for three minutes. No yielding of time. State your name and address. You may only come up once.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Kiki Anastasakis, 3204 Enclave Circle. Firstly, I would like to commend the esteemed council for deciding to purchase the land on 4 Elm Street in East Millstone and designate it as open space. I think that's a wonderful development, and I hope that those efforts to protect open lands in our township continues. And second, I have a question. I was wondering if you could give us an update on the ongoing traffic study, including the traffic study that's DOT-funded for Easton Avenue. There are two issues I would like to address, and they are both traffic-related, quality-of-life-related. One is the possibility of a warehouse. I believe the application is in front of the planning board in the corner of Elizabeth Avenue and Schoolhouse Road. If this, I'm very concerned because the area is a hub of activity. There is a CVS, there is a supermarket, ShopRite. There is a strip mall near there with restaurants, pizza, and Japanese restaurant. And then there is a dollar store on the other side. The intersection is already highly congested and the line in front of Dunkin' Donuts, which often flows into and extends into old Schoolhouse, creates a very dangerous situation. I think the combination of these trucks, if this warehouse were to be built in combination with the other warehouse, which is a few yards down on Elizabeth Avenue, which is much more massive, would create a nightmare scenario for those of us who do our daily food shopping and other activities. And number two, I would like to say that I'm very concerned about the Levin proposal for residential areas in the Rutgers Plaza, in the old Kmart building. And I would just like to say in closing that what Franklin Township needs is more retail. We don't want to be a retail desert where most of us, seniors, end up in other nearby towns and we take our money out of Franklin Township to do shopping in Kohl's in Hillsborough, Target in Bridgewater, and Costco, and in other nearby towns. We need a very careful assessment of what are the needs, the retail needs for clothes and home household goods so that we can keep the money. And seniors do spend their money, trust me. I speak from personal experience. We don't want that money to be bleeding out of Franklin. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Senator Shumala.
Thank you very much, respective council. My name is Pat Shumala, 15 Marcus Street, East Millstone. This is just a public service announcement or reminder that this weekend, February 17th, Saturday, is Fire District Elections. And so come on out and vote for the budget and support your local firefighters. I am running for commissioner as well here in Fire District One. So come out and help support the cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, folks. My name is Shabendu Singh, 6 Treetop Circle, and I'm representing Princeton Highlands. I want to talk about the need for a pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Gold Star Drive and Route 27, and a traffic signal at the intersection of Princeton Highlands Boulevard and Route 27. So first off, I just want to thank the mayor, the deputy mayor, our township manager, and the council for your support up until so far. A lot of our residents are here today, and I understand it's a cold and freezing evening. So several of them may opt to not speak, but we are all here to let you know that it's an important safety issue for us and it's a critical safety issue for us and our families. There is a petition that I have brought along with me that have been signed by 300, close to 300 of our homeowners. And the purpose of this petition is to urge an expedite action on this project. So we appreciate all the continued support that we have received from you. And on behalf of Princeton Highlands, as well as Woodfield Estates, we look forward to positive action from the township. Thank you.
Thank you. You can give that to the clerk if you'd like. The poll, those who are here to support this, please raise your hand so we see the numbers. Great. Thank you. What else wishing to speak?
Alex Strauss, 285 Hasler Way. Just to piggyback on what people said at the last meeting, a public comment that Onyx Warehouse is a bad idea. I'm talking about the one on New Brunswick Road, of course, near ShopRite, by Somerset Run, and basically almost across from the Somerset Woods Nursing Home. We need another warehouse, really, like we need a hole in the head. And we need this warehouse, like we need two holes in the head. This is a really dumb idea. I'd like to know how much, how much work has been done by the township to try to help get stores there, maybe? They recently, of course, closed off the ShopRite, the second entrance. So now everyone coming out of ShopRite, of course, can actually see that brick-faced building from where they come out on that entrance. Okay, so there's better sightlines. I see that there's no executive session scheduled. I know you want to get off with the weather, but maybe that's a good time to figure out how you're going to get rid of this warehouse. It needs to be, it needs to be gone. There's no excuse, really. Of course, we have the giant warehouse behind Mavis Tire. It's been vacant for over half a year now. And we have another one, of course, behind ShopRite going up. And those aren't the only ones, obviously. So this needs to stop. We need to find a way. Other places do it. They find ways to get rid of the warehouses, whether it's Edison, Branchburg, Hillsborough. They find the money to do it. Franklin needs to do the same. Okay? This is just lunacy. Thank you.
You. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Kramer and the councilman. My name is Shawnee Madamova. I'm from Leaf House. We recently opened. It's on 900 Eastern Plaza. I wanted to say that on behalf of Leaf House, which is situated at 900 Eastern Plaza in Somerset, we kindly request the approval to allow Leaf House to maintain signs and banners outside of its business premises and waiving requirements itemized in Article, I don't know how to read this, in Section 253 of this town code. So please be aware that Leaf House operates within a highly regulated cannabis industry, and we are significantly limited in its ability to advertise through online and printing channels, right? As a result, Leaf House heavily relies on banners, signs for visibility and attraction of customers. So in the presence of this business in Franklin benefits the commercial ecosystem of this township. Our neighboring businesses at Somerset Village also rely on Leaf House to attract customers as it serves as an anchor tenant in the commercial zone. These businesses are in support of our petition and would like indirectly enhance their customer footfall and overall business success. We understand that township concerns regarding signage and potential for clutter or visual disruptions. We assure you that the signage or banners that we will display will be tastefully designed, professionally produced, and maintained in a way that will respect the aesthetics integrity of our shared community. I also included the sign petition from our neighbor tenants in our plaza. Unfortunately, a lot of it, because due to the weather, they were not able to show. And there's one neighbor that came in who's also, his business really suffering. They see only, if you want to say.
Yeah, my name is Kevin. I'm the owner of Primal Nutrition. We're a couple doors down from Leaf House, and we've been open up for like a few months, and we've been in the negatives. And, you know, I can only do, you know, in-person promotion as much as I can, but at the same time, not many people know to come to our shopping plaza because the monument sign is very small. And by the time they read everything on that monument sign, they drive right past it. So it's not a very convenient entrance to get into. So we would like to put up more signs so people know to come in to shop with us, you know, all the businesses on the shopping plaza. Yeah, I only like seen like five to six customers a day, which is alarmingly bad because our other six locations, we've been getting like 10, 20 customers per day. Thank you.
So I just wanted to, my last thing is, the Leaf House, currently, we serve about 92 clients per day. In order for the customer, for us to be positive, we need approximately 300 clients per day. And it's very tough with this signage issue where a lot of people just pass the, you know, pass us our plaza because the exit just comes so short.
Thank you. That's your time.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Grippo, you're out of order.
Paul Wilitsky, 13 Republic Row. I just want to say something about the Onyx because I've studied the TRC report, and it's something we should all realize. In the TRC report, it talks about the Buckeye Pipeline being under the site. And the plan call for it to be 21 feet from the pipeline when you're supposed to be 100 feet. That's a variance they're looking for. That's dangerous. So I just want to, we've done that, looked at it real closely. I just want to make that on the record.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one and knowing that water turns to ice at 32 degrees, I move we close public comment.
Are you a science teacher? I second that.
It's a complicated motion, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Address public comments. So for all of the zoning, planning board issues that were brought for us, thank you for your comments. I'm not going to go into them in detail. And I wanted the attorney to comment on sign issue.
Oh, sorry. If the applicant, if the property owner would like relief from those provisions of the sign ordinance, the process is that they file an application to either the zoning or the planning board. Our staff will direct them which way. And so it's not here that that happens. The council doesn't grant that relief. That's relief that's granted by the zoning or planning board. So, you know, my suggestion is that you contact our planning staff, probably Mark Healy is the first place to start, and file the appropriate application with the zoning or the planning board. That's where the application, that's where you can get the relief from those provisions in New York.
Councilman Embarrassan, do you ever want to say something about what we're going to do?
Yes, Mayor. I think this is a known issue that our signage in our township probably doesn't support our small businesses that well because I have heard this sort of complaint from other businesses in the past. But I spoke to the township manager. He informed me that the signage ordinance that we have is quite dated. I believe it's 2009 is when it was updated. So I think it's appropriate for us to revisit the signage ordinance and see whether there's any amendment that we could propose to promote our small businesses. As such, I would like to propose an ad hoc committee of the council with some help from the staff to study the ordinances and come up with anything that we can do to ease the pain that some of these businesses go through in terms of promoting themselves. So I make a motion to form an ad hoc committee to study the ordinance and the signage-related ordinance.
So it's something we go over quite frequently.
I'll second.
Councilman Karazi seconding it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add one other thing here. So our goal in Franklin Township is to make our township business-friendly. And we appreciate the fact that you come and talk about some of the issues that you're facing, not helping your business to be successful. And we like to hear those kind of things so we can work on it or guide you how to go and resolve the issue. But our goal is to make Franklin a business-friendly township. And we appreciate everybody's help and the businesses at our.
Any other discussion?
I agree with all that. I just, as much as I like new task force and commissions, is there any standing committee of the council that this would make sense to bring up in, whether it's administration or public works or?
It's actually the responsibility of the land use.
It would be land use.
So I just wonder if that committee wouldn't be sufficient in this scenario? What the reason would be and what the membership difference might be?
Right. I think we thought about standing committees. I think Mayor and I discussed about this, where this would fit. I think this would be a temporary committee, ad hoc committee, which is focused just this issue so we can do some work and bring it to the land use committee if that's where it belongs.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So we can bring it to the land use committee for recommendations and then it can come to the council. So.
Mayor. Okay, I think if we set up a committee and we have land use responsible for this, so how are the two teams going to work together?
Well, typically, we would do the, we'll meet with the staff and then. Well, typically, we would do the, we'll meet with the staff, and then we plan to interview several businesses along the main business corridors and take some input and then come up, study the ordinances that we have, and perhaps come up with some appropriate improvements, amendments, whatever you may want to call it, and present it to the land use committee. I'm in the land use committee, so I can bring it there. We can discuss it, and then that's going to come back to the council.
Okay, cool. So my only, I'm not objecting to creating more government committees, but it sounds longer to me to create an ad hoc committee that reports then to a standing committee that could add one to two months in the processes. Does a council member have any objection to just having it be through land use? Do you think that would be disastrous in some way? I'm just not understanding.
Yeah, I think the timing wise, I think this can get started tomorrow. It's really, we don't have to wait for the land use committee, which meets once a month, whereas this is a very focused temporary committee that has a very specific goal in mind. Get it done in 30 to 60 days and then recommendations. So it's really, I think it's a more efficient way of doing it.
Okay, for my comments, you need to look at this sign ordinance periodically. I take Councilman Petasnik's point. We're getting a little ad hoc committee happy lately, but I'm going to vote for this. I think in the future, we do need to think how we can fit it into our existing committees. Their discussion, why don't we do roll call? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik?
Yes.
Yes, we have to name the members.
Mayor, myself, and she, Councilman Shepov, Dean, thinking. And then we will ask Mark Healy and Vince Dominack to help us on the side. Anybody else would like to volunteer? But not necessary.
I'm not interested in volunteering, but I will tell, say one pet peeve. And it's not the sign ordinance particularly, but the blaring lights around the borders of shop windows that make it impossible to see and read.
Okay, let's not get into the 32 degrees. If there are, are there any objections to those members? Okay, I don't think we need to vote on that. Members, Mr. Manager, did you have anything?
All right, there's several that have gone unanswered, so I'm more than happy to answer them if you'd like.
Yes.
So Kiki, in reference to our municipal traffic study, the data's been gathered and it's now being integrated into the overall planning study as far as the master plan reexamination of the BI zone. I believe you actually personally should have received, if you haven't already, a phone call from Mark Healy. Look forward to one within the next day or two. We were off today, so, well, I wasn't off, they were off. I'm here, right? So that's the, that's, in reference to that, the data's been collected, that's, and now it's being integrated into and analyzed as part of the overall planning study. The Eastern Avenue study, for those of you who are not aware, there is a long-term corridor improvement study being undertaken with federal funding by Somerset County. I would tell you that for updates on that particular project, you should go to this website. You have a www.easternave.com. And the information related to that study and information on future public meetings will be on that website. And there's also an email address associated that's a link on that website if you want to get updates by email. So that's what I would, I would suggest you do for that. Mayor, if I, if I just for a moment talk about the Route 27 Gold Star issue, there's actually two, as, I'm not telling you what you know for the rest of the people here. There is a pedestrian actuated crossing signal requested at Route 27 and Gold Star that would service both sides of Route 27. In particular, that area is of a high volume of pedestrians because of a New Jersey Transit parking ride on the South Brunswick side of Route 27. The DOT has given general support to that project, and now it comes down to funding. I know that we're about to enter into, we are in budget season now. I am in budget preparation season. The council will soon be in budget hearing season. And that project on, for our part, will look to try to fund that project in this capital project budget year. I will tell you that I have just a personal issue with the state of New Jersey and their requirement for municipalities to provide 25% of the funding for signals such as this on a state highway. And the reason why there's such significant pedestrian traffic is a New Jersey Transit parking ride. And I can't quite understand why the state of New Jersey won't fund it 100%. And it's an issue that I've begun to have conversations with our local legislator about because it just kind of irks me a little bit. I understand when we look to put in traffic signals that are primarily serving a residential neighborhood in our town, that the town is asked to fund a portion of it, and that's where I'll get to next, is your second request. And that is a traffic signal at Princeton Highlands Boulevard and Route 27 and Alston Road on the Kendall Park side. We've had discussions internally among staff about that request. Again, the, the direction from the DOT was for a, what they call a traffic signal warrant analysis be done. Those are done by a licensed professional engineer. I've had discussions with our engineer in-house who works for CME, our township engineering firm, and they're putting together the necessary paperwork to move forward with that warrant analysis. So we're moving forward with the warrant analysis as directed by the DOT. I think that's, I think I answered them all, Mr.
I just want to make a comment. I was driving on Route 27 North last weekend, and lo and behold, there's an accident on the left turn out of the driveway from Princeton Highland into Route 27, there's an accident. So I fully support the concern that you all have, and we will make sure that we push this thing through as much, as fast as we can.
And I would just add too, thank you Township Manager Vor locker for taking those actions, particularly the warrant study, which is, you know, going to help make the case. The state ultimately has the authority on adding that traffic signal for the cars and the pedestrian crossway, I think are both, you know, very high priorities for me and Ward One. We'd hear you all loud and clear. You know, ultimately, we're going to make the best case that we can to the state on both of those issues. The one that's probably, you know, the sort of no-brainer part of this is the crosswalk light. I mean, the fact that there's a parking ride there is, and it's particularly at night with like this season, when people are getting back from work, from New York City in particular, it's at night, and you can't see, and it's very dangerous the way that hill is. And to Councilman Embarrassan's point about the accident, I will continue to reiterate, things take time. In the meantime, please cut through the development, which the two exits that were made there, Woodfield Court and Summerfield Drive, I know it's hard sometimes to make a right out of there, but there is a left turn on Bunker Hill to not get into the accident on 27. And I think particularly that development was designed that way. Those two exits are available to you. Please just reinforce, I know it's a little bit more time, it's not ideal, but it is safer to go out that way, make that right turn. I know there's a timing issue on that light, and we've made a note of that too, so. But, but better alive than, you know, build more time in and stay alive. I mean, ultimately, safety is important, and sometimes you got to not go 200 miles an hour because it's dangerous. You got to go the speed limit, which is safer. And that's a meantime strategy. I don't mean to downplay those requests, fully supportive of them. I just want to reiterate, I'd hate to have anyone be injured just because they're, you know, not using another safer corridor.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to council comments and reports. We cut the public comments short, so out of respect, I hope it will be brief. 32 degrees. Councilman, 32 degrees, go ahead.
Or zero degrees Fahrenheit Celsius, and I won't transition to 273 Kelvin. Okay. I want to just reiterate fire district elections, which are coming up this weekend, and I think it's the same in every fire district from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. Why these are important is our fire companies are volunteer. They have budgets. Those budgets are publicly approved. And my estimation is if you add them all together, they're as big as the municipal budget which you came to this meeting tonight for. And I wonder if you've ever been to your fire commissioner meeting, which is about one-fifth of the taxes that you pay. It helps to show up and support the efforts that they have, and it was nice to see someone from the fire commission come. If you get a vote-by-mail application, you should have already received that or getting it soon. I do highly encourage folks to do it that way and sign up for all the elections in perpetuity so they don't miss any of these important elections. And that's really all for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Embarrassan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments will be very brief. I think we had attended one new business coming into town on Route 27, ASM Tax Services, that's a second location in the state, the one in Edison, they just opened up an office here to help prepare your accounting-related projects and taxes, tax forms. Other than that, there was a Sewerage Authority Board Meeting, first Tuesday of the month last week, that I attended. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Jaka?
Yeah, Mayor, I think I don't have much to say. But I'm highly impressed the way the township handled the snow today. It broke out just very clearly, and you cannot even imagine that we have up to three to four inches snow. This is a very good, all righty. That's what I have today, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I give some highlights from the committee and board of advisory meetings that I've attended, I'd like to share a couple of programs that especially benefits our seniors. There is free online classes for anyone 60 or older through Division of Agent Services, and among the offerings are classes that promote health and wellness of older adults, teach user-friendly ways to experience new technologies, and expand interest in the arts, travel, and cooking. And these classes are 24/7. And if you want to get information, you can sign up at Get Set Up. Just one word, Get Set Up. So I encourage anybody who's 60 and older to take advantage of these free services. Another one was an announcement by the Human Services about expanding income eligibility limits for pharmaceutical assistance to the aged and disabled, and also Senior Gold Prescription Discount Drug Assistance Program, which they increased by $10,000. So I think anybody who is single, about $52,000 income is the limit. Below that, they can take advantage of these, and I believe for the couples, it is $59,000. As far as the meetings, I attended Human Relations Commission, Senior Citizen Committee and Advisory Board of Health meetings, and during the HRC meeting, we had a very informative meeting with our own deputy mayor. Thank you, Ed. And the next meeting is on February 28th at 7:00 p.m. across the hall. I also attended a Senior Citizens Committee meeting. They have appointed chairs, vice chair and secretary. And also, they have three clubs, and they have representatives. One is the Franklin Township Club, Franklin Park Club, and Parkside Club. And a couple of things. One is they are planning to start functional fitness and yoga classes in February, and they're also looking for talents ages 55-plus for audition for the talent show. We have a talent show which is going to be on April 5th, and I was told the show is great, and I'm looking forward to the show, and I will be one of the judges. Their next meeting is on February 22nd and 10:00 a.m. And the advisory board of health were pretty active. I'm glad to let everyone know that soon we will have a special bench in the Senior Citizen Center. This is a bench not for sitting, but it has a QR code as well as some information for people to get information to find alternatives to opioid. As you know, opioid is a major issue, and you can find alternatives for that. And again, I want to thank Dr. Donna Lisi and Amanda Corvus and Jerry Colovincio for working together to make this possible. The bench is going to be in the township for about a month. And also, they had three, during the meeting, they had three speakers, and they talked about addiction services, mental health resources, and they have a new service. You know, when you go to their public health to find information is pretty tedious. So now they have a new service called County Behavioral Health System Navigator. So if you go there, you'll be able to get the information that you want. And the next meeting is on March 3rd. And then we also have the Trail Advisory Committee meeting, which will be for, actually will be tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. across the hall as well.
Thank you. I too would like to thank DPW and contractors we hired for handling the snow. And those of you who missed Black History Month celebration, the game was outstanding, just incredible. My comments, Mr.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, it's 33 degrees now, so I have no comments. Have a good night.
Thank you. Fastest council comments ever. We're on to the council discussion item. There is none minutes approval. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Township Council Executive Session, December 12th. The council regular meeting of January 2nd, and the reorganization meeting as well, and the regular meeting of January 20th. Do you have any, do you have a motion on the minutes?
移到
我第二
第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二 SFY 2024 Community Development Block Grants. It's time for a public discussion, public session, to have any, to have a motion for public session.
移到
第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二第二
Last year, we received forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. The exact amount for twenty-twenty-four is unknown at this point. We haven't approved federal budget. However, we must start our planning process. Applications are out and available on the website. Patients are due March the seventh, twenty-twenty. And then I'll be back to see you again in March, at which time our applicants are invited to make a presentation to the council and to... ...writing their plans. It's not required, but they are welcome to come and explain their projects and what they do. And at, after that particular point in time, we're ready to prepare a plan for submission. And that also is contingent on, hopefully, knowing what our budget is going to be by that time. The plan should be ready to submit between July and August of this year. So I'll be back to see you one more time before we're done. That's all I have.
Could you briefly describe what, how to qualify for one? What kind of projects qualify?
Sure. You, in order for an applicant to apply for these funds, they must be a nonprofit organization. They must have five-oh-one-C-three status, and that's the basic criteria for that. The funds may also be used for acquisition of real property, relocation and demolition, rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures, construction of public facilities and improvements, and public services, and also economic development activity. We have had some really good applications in the past, and I'm looking forward to having a good funding round this year as well. Some of the projects that were undertaken for twenty-twenty-three includes renovations at two... ...for alternatives. We're also doing some more work for the Center for Great Expectations. Good stuff.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject?
Seeing no one, I move we close public comment.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of closing public comments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Franklin is lucky enough that we decided our own funds, because we're over, what, fifty thousand?
Correct, over fifty thousand.
So we're the nineteenth or eighteenth largest town in the state, so not that many towns get to owe their own money. Otherwise, it goes to the county, and the county doles it out. Number fourteen, twenty-twenty-four Hamilton Street Improvement District Budget. Resolutions twenty-twenty, sorry, Resolution twenty-four-zero-fifty-five. I present the resolution for introduction for calendar year twenty-twenty-four. Hamilton Streetsid budget and set public hearing date of March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four to the Township Council for their consideration. Do you have a motion?
移到
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? This is pretty self-explanatory. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
Bookbook hearings and adoption on second readings. So first readings are where we introduce to the world that we have an issue coming up. Second readings are the, when the public gets to speak and we decide whether to pass or not. Ordinance forty-four-twenty-five dash twenty-four, and ordinance amending the Municipal Code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter three-eighty-four, water, more particularly Section three-eighty-four dash nineteen, curb connection capital fees is presented to the public for public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. Do you have a motion to open to the public?
移到
Seconded.
Then seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Same rules, this item only. Anyone wishing to speak?
Seeing not a flinch, I move we close public comment.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. This is something we do every year, to set the fees for connection water system. Essentially, you're kind of buying into system that others have... Do you have a motion to adopt?
移到
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? Clerk.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
What?
Exciting meeting.
It's exciting meeting.
They're enjoying it. They're enjoying the meeting.
There you go.
Mr. Singh, I can't blame you. Have a good night.
Didn't mean to chase you away, but...
He chased him away.
This is, believe it or not, this stuff's boring.
Wow.
Well, there's one highlight.
It's my wife's work.
I'm sorry, I'm not a politician. I tell the truth. And you make it flow so smoothly because of your work, so thank you for your work. Ordinance forty-four-twenty-six dash twenty-four, and ordinance amending the Code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter twenty-twenty-six, vehicles and traffic, providing a new section, twenty-twenty-six dash thirty-five, road closures except for emergency vehicles, provided for the closure of a portion of Brookline Avenue to all traffic except emergency vehicles. Is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
移到 Seconded. Okay. Sorry, Alex, I didn't see you move. Go ahead.
Moved in seconded. We're open to the public. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. God forbid I do that wrong. We are now open to the public on this item only. It's the closing of one end of Brookline Avenue so that the Sewage Authority has better access to their building.
Seeing no one, I move to close the public session.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of closing public session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
移到
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
The next two ordinances has to do with the acquisition of lands in East Millstone to...
No, the conservation easement first.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're right.
Twenty-seven.
Yep, you're right. I skipped it. Thank you. Ordinance forty-four-twenty-seven dash twenty-four, and ordinance accepting a conservation easement from Royal Somerset Incorporated to the Township of Franklin for the property known as Block five-oh-two-point-zero-one, Lot forty-seven-point-zero-two, also known as thirty-fifteen Davidson Avenue, is presented to Township, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. We have a motion to open to the public.
移到
Seconded.
Great work, council. Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Seeing no one coming forward, Mayor, I move to public hearing.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. I always laugh at these things because it's the property known as Block and Lot, but also known as the address. It's the other way around. Refer to it as Block and Lot. Do we have a motion to adopt?
移到
Seconded.
Then seconded. Any discussion on the item? Pretty self-explanatory. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
Now we're on to the two ordinances that deal with acquisition of what will be open space in East Millstone. Forty-four-twenty-eight dash twenty-four ordinance to acquire by purchase or condemnation certain lands within the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey pursuant for the purpose of open space preservation in the Township of Franklin pursuant to N. J. S. A. forty-A twelve-dash-thirteen-A for property also known as, for property known as East Millstone United Methodist Church, also known as Block seventy-three-point-zero-one, Lot four-point-zero-one, commonly known as Four Elm Street, East Millstone, New Jersey, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. We have a motion to open to the public.
移到
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public. Same...
Alex Strauss, two-eighty-five Haslett Way. Not to rain on the parade of folks in East Millstone, I'm not against this purchase. My question, though, is, when are we going to talk about things like warehouses and the Open Space Fund? Hillsborough spending almost ten million to keep a warehouse away out of their Open Space Fund. I think we need more transparency when it comes to Open Space Fund. I don't even know how much is in the Open Space Fund. And I see the letter Q of the consent agenda, Q isn't quiet. Q is bonding almost a million dollars for operating expenses. Okay? Isn't that true? Well, it's not. Is it acquisition, though? Is it acquisition? I think most people would be surprised that we're not acquiring a lot of land. Can we maybe change the law to say we should be using seventy-five percent of the open space money for acquisition? Okay? Edison's starting an Open Space Fund because of the warehouses. That's what they say. But Franklin has a million warehouses. Hillsborough can't even pass one, and of course, none of it is, we're not talking about any warehouses at all. Okay? I'm not saying you have enough money to buy every piece of land and keep it away from warehouses, but there doesn't seem to be any effort. And the idea is, well, we don't look for it. We don't look for it. You pass the business in industry zone. It seems like you were looking for warehouses. So I think more can be done and should be done on the Open Space Fund. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, I move we close public comment on this item.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. The attorney asks to speak.
I, just to correct record, I don't believe Edison Township is considering an Open Space Fund to stop warehouse development. I don't know. I'm their town attorney, so I probably would know because I'd have to write the ordinance. I just haven't heard that as part of a discussion in Edison. Of course, Edison is the home to, I think, the largest industrial park of warehouses on the East Coast, so I think everybody should know that. I don't, I have a feeling that Mr. Bornlack will probably answer the rest of the question, but over the course of the twenty-five years that I've been here, I probably purchased a hundred million dollars' worth of property using Open Space Fund and green acres funds and farmland preservation funds. Now, you might not think that they were all done to prevent warehouses, but they were all preserved land. And when you add that to the land that the State of New Jersey has preserved in Franklin Township, there probably is no municipality in the state who has as an aggressive open space and rec, and parks and farmland preservation program anywhere. So I, Mr. Bornlack probably knows how many acres it is, but it's pretty disingenuous to say that we never consider buying land. And the fact that one town decided to wake up one morning and spend ten million dollars, it's a drop in the bucket to what's happened here. Yes, in my, my observation over the court.
First off, Q is a resolution that authorizes the sale of bonds for three different purposes. In this particular case, those were bonds utilized to fund the water utility, bonds that were general, general-purpose bonds out of the General Fund of the Township, and open space bonds. Open space bonds, since that seems to be the topic, are utilized for the acquisition of property. We generally ask bond ordinances over the course of several years. That would be the same for the water and general-purpose bonds. And we fund them out of our General Fund or our Open Space Fund or our Water Fund. And then there comes a point in time where we need to sell the bonds, which is what that ordinance authorizes us to do. Because ultimately, we have to incur the debt by the sale of the bonds that was authorized by the ordinances that were passed by council over the course of several years. I think the last time we sold bonds was maybe twenty-seventeen, so it's been a number of years, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. So, so that's the purpose. As far as the amount of land that's preserved in Franklin Township, certainly since the inception of an Open Space Trust Fund in the early two thousands, there have been hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres of land that have been preserved in the town. Overall, we're about forty-eight square miles, and about sixteen square miles of the town are about one-third is, a little, actually a little more than one-third is preserved. And I think that in the last, I want to say, the last five years, we've preserved just about five hundred acres out of the Open Space Trust Fund. So while this might be a smaller purchase, I think it's about a quarter of a million dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. This particular purpose of this acquisition is to establish a, a Greenway Belt and continue that Greenway Belt around what is a historic village that's on the national and state registers. So there would be a desire to preserve that land as it encircles the area of, of that historic village. And the opportunity arose, and the Open Space Advisory Committee made the recommendation to purchase.
Would you please comment on the openness or secrecy of what, how much is in the Open Space?
Well, I mean, it's a, it certainly is something that's discussed. There's a, the finances of the Open Space Trust and the Open Space Funds are discussed at every Open Space Advisory Committee meeting. There's a, there's a financial report given by the consultant. I, I believe, if you're going to hold me to a number right now, I believe it's at about seventeen million dollars in the Open Space Trund, Open Space Trust Fund in, in cash. And obviously, the Open Space, the township has the ability to bond for large purchases and incur the debt for those acquisitions that it's not advisable to purchase with cash.
So I just, I just want to make a comment regarding the subject. I, I believe our average purchase price per acre is about forty, forty-five thousand dollars an acre. Some of these marquee land that is owned by property owners command a few million dollars an acre, and to spend that kind of money from the public funds would be rather irresponsible. I think we, we have to deploy our funds efficiently for the purpose of the entire town, and just going after one property and spend twenty, thirty million dollars would be quite irresponsible.
And, and along those lines, just, just as a last point on the, on the questions and comments, the BI Zone was not necessarily created to facilitate the construction of warehouses. The reality is, is that when the BI Zone was a, was a product of the merging of three zones that had previously existed in the town, that was the CB or Corporate Business Zone, which was comprised primarily of lands along the Davidson Avenue and World's Fair Drive Corridor, the M-one and M-two zones, which were light manufacturing and warehousing zones. The areas where warehouses have been proposed... The areas where warehouses have been proposed since that change and combination of those three zones into one have included those areas where warehouses were previously permitted, and then areas where they were not permitted, but the goal of the combination was to allow for warehousing facilities to be constructed in the, in the prior CB corporate business zone, which is what, what has happened in certain cases as far as the, the development of that type of business along the Davidson Avenue corridor. So it's not that the BI zone made it so that you could build warehouses in Franklin Township. The BI zone made it so that warehouses could be developed in an area, the corporate business zone, that previously they were not allowed. However, in the M1 and M2 zones, which includes the area along New Brunswick Road and Old New Brunswick Road, that entire area falls within the old M1 zone. It is now the BI zone. Those uses were previously permitted. In fact, the building that we're talking about at that particular location was a manufacturing plant before it was gutted and, and there was, the, it has had multiple iterations, but neither here nor there. It's going to be a, twice it was going to be a, a charter school. I mean, it's been a number of different possibilities, but that's, that's the history, to be accurate.
And adding to what Councilman Embarrassment, Embarrasson said, if your goal is really to preserve habitat, many people from Canal War came up here about habitat and trees and birds and all the rest, then buying the most expensive land in town with open space money does not make sense. Any other comments on, I have to introduce? We have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, discussion on the item?
Township manager Bornlacher, can you remind me again how many houses this purchase would stave off?
It's about, I think it's, you're catching me. I, I want to say it's like 2.7 acres and it's in the R10, which is 10,000 square foot lots, which would mean four lots to an acre with some infrastructure. It's probably about six houses.
That's what I recall, recall. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilman Kowazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
So we have ordinance 44-29-24, capital ordinance, providing for the acquisition for the property known as East Millstone Methodist Church, also known as Block 73.01 lot 4.01 and commonly known as 4 Elm Street, East Millstone, New Jersey, in and by the Township of Franklin and the County of Somerset, State of New Jersey appropriating $261,500. Therefore, they're from the open space trust fund of Township of Franklin to pay for the cost thereof is presented to the public hearing, final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required to have a motion to open to the public.
The mood.
Moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Same rules.
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslett Way. Over there, I mean, again, not to rain on the parade in East Millstone, it's a historic area, very nice. The lot sizes on that side, I think, are fairly large, so we don't know that it's going to be four houses. It could be fewer than four houses. And of course, it's going to be tax-free in perpetuity, no taxes. But that's not, to me, what is the main issue. The main issue, again, is the fact that we have a million warehouses, or it seems that way, and we're not spending north of Amwell Road in areas where potentially we can keep out warehouses. Of course, 17 million won't do it, but between borrowing, bonding, et cetera, maybe one property, start with one property, benign schoolhouse? I don't know. But the point is that we, we are different from other places in that we're not trying to keep the warehouses out with money. Maybe we don't have enough money for all the warehouses, but we see Branchburg, Hillsborough, and other communities using the money to try to do that, to try to fight the warehouses. So, you know, good for you, East Millstone, but again, and also the open space fund, if it's used for parks, fine, that's allowed, but try to go, for instance, wards four and five, you could potentially use some of that money out of the American Rescue Plan, right? For the parks in that, in those wards, okay? I think it's true. It's true. Why are you shaking your head? I mean.
It's the purpose of the American Rescue Act, sorry.
I think, I think for parks, you can, in, in, in the certain census districts in that area, you can. I researched it, sir. So, so again, it's just about protecting our money. You want to laugh at me, but good luck with the warehouses. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, I move we close public comment.
Second it.
All in favor of closing public session say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Renown.
Once again, I don't know that there's much to comment. Probably said it all. Purpose of the open space fund.
American Rescue Plan.
The American Rescue Plan property is, or specific use, park-related and property I, I think that we've beaten this horse until he was dead, and I don't really have anything more to add, Mr. Mayor, unless you really feel I need to.
No, you don't. Several years ago, had to be, though maybe you remember, it had, before 2010, there was a vote on how to use open space money.
Yes, there was.
I was in tough then, and I predicted it was going to fail to allow open space money to be recreation. I fought it, and it passed overwhelmingly. I think it passed in every district in the, so people don't agree with you as that's how, how we spending the money.
And, and its name really isn't the Open Space Trust Fund. It is the Open Space Farmland Preservation Historic and Recreation Fund.
We'll go on a little bit more. This town has gone to great extent to minimize warehouses. There are other people in this town, in other places in this town, that also deserve our We have a motion on the item.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilman Kowazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
No ordinances on first reading, consent agenda. Items A through S as listed on the consent agenda portion of this meeting are presented to Township Council for adoption. To have a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second it.
Moved in seconded, any discussion on the consent agenda? Anyone want to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson.
Yes.
Councilman Kowazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosna.
Yes.
There are no resolutions to be broated on separately. Old business. Does anyone have any nominations for boards, committees?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three of them, actually.
Really?
Thank you. First one is for the Human Relations Commission. I'm happy to let everyone know that one of our community members by the name of Sam Vilo will be joining the Human Relations Commission. I also have a nomination for the Trail Committee and Mr. Pervish Law. Lastly, we have Mr. Mark Dancy for the planning board, so I welcome all of them. And, Council, please.
What was his name again?
Mark Dancy for the planning board.
No, 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 I know there's an opening.
Pervish Law for.
Any other nominations?
I have a few. I'd like to nominate Kunal Lakia for the zoning board. I believe Kunal is here. And then Robert Kovacs and Vanessa Davenport to Sewage Authority.
Robert is sitting right there.
What was the second name for those?
Vanessa Davenport.
So one's alternate number two and one's alternate number one? Two alternates?
Yes.
Who's for, which one is which?
Robert Kovacs would be for.
And any other nominations? I have a nomination for cultural arts, Terry Seggio. Any other nominations? So there are no overlapping, competing nominations. We can do this by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Congratulations to all of you. And that's all we have to, a motion to adjourn?
The mood. Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Be well, Franklin. Have fun storming the castle.